Ay, ay, ay. Ay, yuyuyu. Ah, ay, 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 ay. Semmin calbaka ya kulk. What's that? Yeah, I don't know, chill. Just wanna piss it. Three, go. Whew, semmin calbaka ya kulk. Okay, that's great, that's great. That's perfect. Okay, I can move. Uh, let me think. So uh to do two fetch if set to here but it if not if yeah let me just try. Let's have like try there for example we need check. See this one, check it too. Okay, but say I okay, pretty fast, more than not found and uh four. Uh okay, that's pretty fast. Um I mean we are good, so I can uh answer this point. Yeah, I have to type it, but not now. Uh fetch chu 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 chu. Is it so? Can we see that? Again, statics, statics, okay. As left example, we don't need so can we go? Mm mm mm, okay, it's time to see errors, so is is like function plan with the did it do if raise a way to return, you know, comes from the res. Now let's just do like that. No, la la, da na da, did 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 uh up la. Yeah, okay. Okay, 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 okay. Okay, okay, okay. New mice. It's first have it like that. What's the file on? Oh, okay, okay. I think. So maybe, maybe like. Okay, I don't know, I got about, okay, up low. Uh so uh na 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 na, okay, the effect new. Okay, it don't need to be either up. It don't need that. She has type model uh model display eight, maybe there. At oh four three, which is a function. Okay, why not, come to to to, and I could say a next function, I guess. Function components. No problem, none of you props, which uh okay, so I don't know, uh I'm sorry, so I don't know what I use now, I'm gonna use it. Uh on full screen, follow. No, if I need it, I'll check, uh yeah. Come to to to, let me just add that, there, let me see if if we do it, did to there, there, okay, did it true. Let me re uh na na na. If display mode I have for return three yes, oh. If not, returning. Ambidid. Let's make it shorter. Uh let's just make it shorter. Well, uh for if true, up low. Oh, I can do that? Okay, let maybe. So I now uh up. If not, it comes to raise, uh string, that's on the raise. Mm, there's no current, um mm. Can close that on? I was like, yeah, it's real cheap, did you wait a half? Let me see. Nothing, that's that's probably that's good. Okay. Let me down my phone. Oh, it's not. When I brand this her, what's the hell we say? No. What's going on, baby? I okay, let me see. What the hell is that? Super. Uh you know what, okay, that's 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 great. Oh, may I, okay. Okay, so three yes, it's so many components. Four, that's two. F for what the hell? Program. Fetch did it do, did it did it did it do, chu chu chu. Model viewer. Why not actually? More display mode, model viewer. Model viewer, uh should I I listen, listen, maybe to to to. And if you got props, I mean, come over here, but uh I'm trying to Just know a bit. Not found that now, but um yeah, I have that, so that's great, actually I don't need any find it, I I find a way to to do it, so let's let it be just uh um uh Okay, returned that. So Should know this way more, no, nothing. No need. Did it do, okay. I need it, but okay. What's up is that, bro, what's up? Let me see, what's up? What is it, did you did you find the chip string, I was just here, did it, how was it type, uh Um he I still have to check right now. So it might be undefined or uh if uh I use issue uh my god. Or if my only maybe maybe an object. Ugh. Oh, maybe 'cause I'm tired, to notice. Glaze me, glaze me. Yo. Come on, bro. Uh what the hell is that?
If there is a rank choice election, how would you vote, Mister Mondani?
If there was a ranked choice election?
In this, you'd have to rank these.
My myself number one and Curtis number two.
Mister Sliwa.
Oh, please don't be glazing me here, sorry. Are you kidding?
Mister Sliwa, do I have a
First off, his body shape should be at the middle of the decision. I know, but let's get you out of here.
Glaze me. Glaze me, glaze. Uh there's Leanne Toubert, how did I did it did it? How did I did it did it did it did it? It's too tight. This word became cleaner and more idiomatic? What do you mean? Do you mean? Idiomatic, sorry, uh ha. Let me go. Okay, so no watch string, no. Oh, type of right. String? It's gonna type, yeah, type, uh did it did it, ready, is there a ready one? No. How amazing, hold on. Yeah, that's actually, yeah. You did it so, you do it like one, the first one, ready? So type, type of ready, did it string, I don't know, if yes. A ready, if not, array, uh does it do do? Okay, it's uh oh no, okay, 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 I get it, I get it, I get it, let 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 me, let me write. So this row, I don't know if it's actually in the string. So now um condition, so ready, so uh type of row uh type row, no, row ID uh str uh string? If yes, ready? If not, array. Hey, that's is array, let me think. On row ID. Okay, if yes. Let's take the first one. If not it's gonna be new. Okay, so actually it might be strange, it did it did it, yeah, that's true, that's true. Uh string. But if it's new, it can be there, so two two two, okay, let me see. That's uh new, uh new of something like that, return. Okay. So it return uh the components. Yeah, it can be there, but let's let's see, it's actually not, it's supposed to pass something new. So yeah, it seems it seems better, it seems better, it seems it seems better, it seems better. Uh, how would be true? You know what, yes sir, and there, yeah, okay, if I say right, yeah, up. Right, uh for the moment. Yeah, or there. Glaze me. Uh 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 what is it, is it uh is it gonna is it gonna is it gonna string, pass the plan? Yeah, anybody in code before hitting it, yeah, the back in code, did it did it, okay. Working for booking more of safety net, uh for creating same way, you're right, you have to place I was just like, yeah, in the body, did it do? In the first, you can some pass somewhere, so you'd like to have the same line. But you should have small share components on something like yeah, first, and that you can, yeah, or okay, absolutely, uh there's a, no, absolutely, but very very specific, it's all, it talks about model ID scan, model, so it belongs to the map figure, no? Like global unit library, good ocean component in another map. Or clever map map, it were involve, you know, ideally, maybe, uh you're, if you prefer, please, yeah. See later, see more, anything you did it do. Uh okay. Okay, that's great, so let's take it from uh where was it, no? Here for this one, we that's a invalid one ID. Mm, I don't know. Checks. Explore defaults, function invalid model ID. A parameter, just components. What? Kung fu dance, so see void, never, uh what the hell? Uh let me type it, but reacts. There you go, F C? Yes, it is. What the hell is that, I can, it's it's who, you're okay, F C, I can? Oh. Oh, uh uh God, what the hell? I'm just keep working, so it's my plan. Go for it. The why, and there, no, like, what's the problem? Okay, I know, I can see, it got like cool, yeah, but um I get it, but I get it, but what's up with that? How do you know? How do you know actually guys? Like what's wrong? Three years. Type now from which. Uh let's just wait for the uh if not there. Oh my god bro. Oh asleep we try. Oh my god bro. Oh asleep bro. Oh yeah I get it 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 I get it. Okay so we are good. It's three years string if not if not I don't even have that so. Let us check that so yeah and okay. How how is this cool? Cyprus. Something like that yeah Cyprus perfect. Birthday thing for oriental. Last time I think it's anything I think I have that thing interesting so. See is it from school last year search for it was now for speed validated. Right. Okay 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 so I test I see I love I love I show. Uh okay. We have a nine. Let's have. Nine nothing. And okay. Okay that's great um so. If you have three three years when you're so I actually don't have to. I don't need it actually three years when you're uh. Oh my god oh my god oh my god oh my oh my oh my. Oh it's time to play with three years. Okay it's time to play. It's time to play actually it's time to play. Okay it's time to play. It's definitely time to play. Okay. So it's definitely time to play. Obviously it'd be uh uh yeah okay. Oh my oh why not? It's a quarter. Uh don't need that solved here I guess um. Let's me think. Oh three years think camera controller oh my god some coordinates. Shit oh yeah. It's a reader shampooing doing the direction I love line. We're seeing did it did this day and the street during ourselves. Okay so what was I saying? Great. Uh. I don't worry don't use that but let's have. Yes. Oh actually. And some viewer. Room plumber. Yeah room plumber uh. Oh data um. And okay. Mm 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 mm. If okay raise. Yeah okay. Okay so. Reason every. Oh my god. Okay 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 okay. I mean I'm gonna see later let me see oh my god. Uh up. Yeah so let's copy that uh uh. New. Okay. Close that and next navigation for the parameters. Uh okay. So I don't need that anymore. Uh strange to go through the code that I understand. Mm hmm. Just three of her. Um. Yeah it might be shot. It should be. Uh up. If we do. Mm hmm no he didn't. So models. So. Oh yeah yeah yeah. Uh. Uh maybe shot sorry. Shot. It might change actually. Not maybe shot. Mm okay. Doesn't fit on the three yes uh I'm sorry double F uh that's. Voying it has to be if it has to be there right now but maybe a component. Some might be a component uh if it's in a page. It can't stay like a third I don't know. Uh ID four did it did it did it. Okay. Okay. Should be clearer than. Oh. I know. I know for. Reading reading uh. It's only me me me. Hold that bro oh my god bro. Oh I gotta sleep. I'm gonna sleep for sure for sure for sure for sure. For sure. I gotta sleep for sure for sure for sure. Uh. For sure for sure for sure for sure. Hold that bro oh my god. Oh my god. Three five. 'Cause I've been trussing. I don't I don't know. Should really be. Mm hmm. Who's that guy? Hey you should write Google please. No that's crazy. Solid solid. Actually I should be honest that's pretty solid. Pretty 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 solid. Um so three. We use effect uh. Bro at this point bro. Apply apply. At this point bro oh my god. Render uh. I don't know. Uh. Like. Viewer. Maybe something like that. Uh kids no writing there but. I was getting serious right now. I don't know it sounds too serious right now. Oh my god. Oh my god. Oh my god bro please. Why? Someone must have.